My dedication to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, and the visible liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you everybody for coming. Our first item on the agenda is public comment. We're going to receive oral communications from members of the public. Members of the public may address the select board for up to three minutes. The select board shall not engage in discussion on topics raised during public comment, but may choose to add the topic to a future agenda. This segment will be limited to 15 minutes. Is there any public comment tonight? Hi Mike, come on up.
Good evening everyone, Mike Dohls, we're going to have Newbury. I'm asking for the next meeting to have something put on the agenda, and I would like to have a media committee be established. When we signed the contract in 2019 with cable for 10 years, it stated in the contract we're supposed to have a media committee. And granted, it was dissolved in, you know, for a number of reasons. But I would like to see if we can get interest. And then again, if there's a committee formed and, you know, Flava wants to eat properly done, and do it the right way and get in, let's get it done. I mean, there was what that was done for the town. And it's still the valuable information that can help get this thing rolling. So less than three minutes, I just pass the hat on.
Thank you Mike.
I would like to, so do I have to put it in a letter? If you want to, or can you guys consider it from this?
We'll take it into consideration.
Okay, so you don't need a letter?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks Mike.
Any other public comment tonight? Okay. Grants, gifts, and donations. We have state 911 emergency medical dispatch grant for $18,000.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Any discussion? Call in favor?
Aye.
A donation of four file cabinets to the police department by John Ferrara.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Any discussion on this one? Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye. William and Geraldine D'Amio, Bill's going to recuse himself. William and Geraldine D'Amio, a donation of a Purple Heart wreath.
Motion to accept.
Second. Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay Bill, you can come back. The Friends of the Newbury Council on Aging, $2,639.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Any discussion? Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Under new business, we have a declaration of surplus for a 2024 Explorer previously used by the Newbury Police Department.
Motion to declare surplus to 2024 Explorer used by the police department.
Second.
Any discussion on this? Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have an appointment of Virginia Salem for an election worker to be appointed for the remainder of the calendar year.
Motion to appoint Virginia.
Second.
Any discussion? Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we have an appointment for Alyssa Walton as an election worker to be appointed for the remainder of the calendar year.
Motion to appoint Alyssa.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
We have approve a one day liquor license. Notch Brewing opening day event at One Elm Street, Newbury, Mass.
A motion to approve the liquor.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Sarah, did you want to come up and talk about your event?
Hi everyone, my name is Nicholas Queso. I work at Notch Brewing in Salem. So we were approached by Governors Academy to do a welcome event for new students coming in. And so it's all 21 plus. Basically, open bar, welcome event, just to introduce everyone there and, you know, they can socialize. So my job is the mobile beer garden manager. So we kind of have a traveling tap truck that goes and does these events. I have done hundreds of events over the last few years. I'm TIPS certified. All IDs will be checked to confirm that guests are 21 plus. The event would be running from 5 to 9 p.m. Only using plastic cups, so no glass, so minimize the risk of any cuts or anything. And we'll have a rope dock drinking area, so no one is wandering off with alcohol.
Well thought out.
And so this is kind of, we do this on a weekly basis at different locations. So at this point, we've pretty much, you know, perfected more or less how to minimize risks.
Great, thank you. Any questions from the board?
I apologize if there's a map in here already, but where's the truck going to be on the campus? Do you know offhand or?
I don't recall off the top of my head. But I know they have an area dedicated to like an event space. Unfortunately, I'm just not too familiar with it.
I should know, I live right down the street, but I.
Yeah, I don't recall, but I do know that they do have a dedicated drinking area set up for us. So yeah, so it'll be limited to one, one spot.
I have a question. Is this a full liquor license or just a?
Just beer.
So just a beer garden?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
Any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
For your event.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the item, item on the agenda is the Byfield Community Arts Center. 7th Central Street. One day liquor licenses. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, second.
Okay, any discussion on this?
Yes.
Okay, Leslie.
The discussion is, has the, who will the liability go under for this one day event? Is the rental lease still pending?
The rental lease is still pending.
So how does that actually work out as far as?
Well, it depends on whether or not they're subleasing it out. If they're subleasing it, then it has to be approved by the select board, and we would get the insurance, the appropriate insurances from those parties. If they're holding the event themselves, then it's covered under our insurances.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I can speak on.
David, do you want to come up and speak?
I can speak on that.
Say who you are, thank you.
Dave.
Hi Dave.
Dave Hill. Executive Director at the BCAC. So on insurance, we typically, our insurance has the town of Newbury as a.
Additional.
Additional insured. So we make sure to cover both us and the town of Newbury as the owners of the property. So that, that is something our insurance covers.
And these events that we're approving, they're all, they're your events, correct?
These are all under the BCAC, yes.
Yeah.
And David, you said everything is in order with these, correct?
Yeah, they can list the dates if you want.
Yes.
So we have nine total. It's August 27th, August 31st, September 1st, September 6th, September 14th, September 27th, September 28th, September 29th, and October 15th, all of this year. Those are all in the evening, I believe.
Afternoon, evening, right?
What was that?
The one of them, the Blues event is afternoon, evening.
The Blues events, the Sunday ones are earlier. We open at like 4:30 and those are done by about 9 o'clock.
Okay, any further questions?
Do we have any idea when the lease is going to be available?
David?
Sure, it should be posted in the central register. It'll be posting tomorrow. Mr. Hill will get a copy tomorrow.
Yes. Good to hear.
Any other questions for me?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you Dave.
Thank you guys.
Next we have approved business license, good luck with your events. We have an approved business license of water dog grooming, 94 Newbury Port Turnpike, Brittany Charles.
Approved water dog grooming business license.
Second.
Is Brittany here?
Sorry.
No, I don't see Brittany here.
Is this a renewal or is this new or?
I believe it's a renewal.
It's a renewal?
I think there was some input there. The, she was in partners with Barker's Dog on Hanover Street. They moved the location. And the two of them had a, had a breakup. And the girl that was started Barker's Dog has gone to Salisbury. And she, the other girl stays in the area. So I, I'm not sure if that would make it new or not. Just to, you know, fill you in.
Just a change of the name, same operation.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, just a name change. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have a public hearing. Do you know what time that's posted, is that 7:15 David?
We didn't post it separately, it's a different time. So any, anytime the board would like to open.
Okay. I guess we'll open it now. There's, we have the right of a first refusal on 61A. It's an option for 34 Central Street. It's a public hearing. Does, is there anybody here from 34 Central Street that would like to be heard? David, no? David Powell, did you come for this public hearing?
Yes, mhm, I'm here as a member of the Open Space Committee and also a member of the public.
Okay, do you want to come up and speak?
Not until you've had your discussion, which should have started 10 minutes ago.
Okay. Okay, so we have in your packet, you have. I think it's dated July 2nd. It's right after the declaration of the Ford Explorer. There's a letter by Robert E. Pritchard and Melanie Pritchard to. A notice of intent to sell and convert land pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 61A, Section 14. It's 34 Cent, Central Street. I believe the town has had, has looked at this. I think the planning board looked at it. And we don't have any municipal use for this. So in order for it to go into 61, or come out of 61A, the town has a right of first refusal. And if we were going to use it for anything for municipal use, I don't believe the town of Newbury has any municipal use for this. Is there any, any questions from the board?
The buyer? They already have a buyer, correct? Is that what I read in here?
I believe so.
And is, I saw the, the price and the buyer. And I just, I, I'm, I kind of feel, I'm sorry the Pritchards aren't here. And Tracy, you might know this. I mean, is this something that, that was favorable to them? Is this, is this, and I know I'm just asking for an opinion, but.
So, so the matter before the board is whether or not we find municipal use for this.
Right, right.
Nothing to do with the sale, the price of the sale?
Well, it's in the package.
Yeah, no, it does.
I mean, it's, I mean, it's public record, it's in the package, so.
But the matter before us is whether or not we want to, to, I guess, assign, take it for a municipal use.
Exercise your right of first refusal.
Right. We have the right of first refusal on it.
Right, I got it.
So.
I just want a little background, that's all, but.
So perhaps Mr. Powell can come up and give us a little background? Did you have comment on this?
Okay, David Powell, 5 Kent Way. And I'm a member of the Open Space Committee. Which, and 61A, 61, 61A and B issues are within our purview. So it was on the agenda for the meeting that we would have had tonight had we not had some illness. Okay. What I know about this is that it goes back some time. That essentially you have an almost present 10 acre lot, maybe a little more, that has been in 61A for many years. And so the owners currently have come to the town to ask her to be taken out of 61A because they put it on the market. And they in fact had a negotiation out of which came an offer from a realty and developer outfit in North Andover. And the agreement was drawn up as I understand it. But the buyer at that point didn't actually know that the land was under 61A. And so when that emerged, it complicated the issue. And what you have simply is, is a straightforward request. However, in the interim, the town was voted to put that under a zoning overlay in relation to the NVTA housing initiative, if you remember, which essentially identified two parcels in Byfield, one of which was that parcel. And that is a buy right situation. Meaning that if you opt to do that, you can do it by right. However, there are indications that the current people who are offering to buy it probably wouldn't choose to do buy right because their track record is doing 40Bs. And so in many ways, a 40B is a better option for them for a bunch of reasons. So that's what I know. There are some other things which I don't think are particularly relevant. I personally am a little puzzled as to why the planning board didn't make any recommendation. Because that's their responsibility, even though their recommendation might have been, you know, very open. They should have made a recommendation, not left it to you. And I don't know, has there been a report from the Conservation Commission?
Do we have any feedback from any of our boards or committees on this?
We have an official letter from the planning board. The Board of Assessors met on it. Similar situation determined that there was no municipal use.
Yeah.
Conservation Commission, we did not receive anything.
Well, you, you say hasn't been, is that what you're saying?
Hasn't been, hasn't been what?
There hasn't been a recommendation. They haven't discussed this.
I don't know if they've discussed it, we didn't receive a written recommendation.
From the Conservation Commission. So we received something from the planning board saying that there was no municipal use. We received something from the Board of Assessors saying they had no municipal use. And the Conservation Commission hasn't opined to the select board.
Well, you're obliged to get a response before you can make a decision.
From the?
Conservation Commission. The law requires it.
Do you, are you aware of that David?
I am not, I did not see that.
Well, as I understand, the 61A and the instructions on the state website, there are two important town or community. And one is the planning board and the other is the Conservation Commission.
The, the law requires that the, the seller's attorney typically make notification to those boards and committees. And then we, the town, have 120 days to exercise our right of first refusal.
Okay, when did that time tick off? When did that clock start ticking?
I think it was June 2nd, I believe.
The letter, the letter of, the other David attached this pack, it says on July 3rd.
July 3rd.
Planning Board, Conservation Commission, and State Forest.
An assessor and planning board.
Assessor and planning board.
July 2nd is what the letter that I, I have.
Yeah, that's what we should. Was received on the 8th.
Okay, and we, and the, and the Conservation Commission, have they met since July 2nd?
Believe they have.
And they have not opined either way on this, correct?
They have not.
So they were notified?
Yes. All parties that were needed to be notified were notified.
Okay. And town council has vetted this, Tracy?
Mhm.
Yeah. This has already been through town, town council.
What does vetted mean that?
She's reviewed it.
Town council.
She's reviewed it.
Sorry?
Town council has reviewed this before.
Yeah, but what does that mean? I've reviewed it.
It means that, that everything is in order for us to vote to exercise our right of first refusal.
I don't think so. That, if you have on record that the town council has said that, fine. If you can produce that, but I don't think so. If they have, I can't imagine why they would if they didn't find that you had some response from the Conservation Commission, even if it were verbal and not written.
So if we table this to the end of the month, the end of September, our next meeting, is that still within the 120 days?
Checking right now.
I have a quick, do we have to vote to open the public hearing?
I don't believe that happens, so yes, you would have to.
We, that, that never happened, right?
I don't believe so.
Just saying, good catch.
Sorry to be difficult, but if you want to do this properly.
It needs to be done proper, properly.
Yeah, we should be in with time. It's 120 days, so you have more, more than enough time.
Okay. So do we, do, what I'm missing is the language to open the public hearing, so.
Motion to open the public.
There you go, yeah.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. So it is 7:20. I'm going to assume this public hearing is now open. Mr. Powell.
And I'm in favor of that.
Yeah. Mr. Pa, Powell has suggested that we're missing, we have rece, we have received information from the assessors office and the planning board. We're missing information from the Conservation Commission. I'll entertain a motion to table this to our next meeting.
Motion to table this discussion to the next meeting.
You can postpone it, sure.
Until we get all our ducks in a row. All right, I have a motion to table in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. This will be tabled to our September 24th meeting.
I think one of the key things too, Alicia, is if you read that correctly, David, the town has to have a use for it.
Technically, you don't even have to have a public hearing for this.
It's used.
No, but it's supposed to be a public hearing.
Doesn't, yeah, but you don't have to actually.
You don't, it's.
It's fine, we'll continue it till September.
It's fine.
Okay.
So September what?
24th.
Thank you.
So there was no posting in the, in the paper?
There was.
Okay. All right, well, let's run it like a regular public hearing then, the next time, where the language is here or I open it and stuff like that.
Dave, can I ask, can I ask Dave a question? The, what you were talking about with the 40B versus the, the, the new overlay.
Yeah.
Would, and this is just for anybody in the room, would.
I'm going to stop. Can you have that conversation with him after this? That's not on the agenda. We tabled the public hearing.
The public hearing's not closed yet, that's on the agenda.
We tabled it.
Okay.
Can you mind, do you guys mind talking about it after, after the meeting?
I'm not going to talk to him privately. I want to talk to him so that the entire town knows what I'm talking about. So I can wait until the next, it's like, what meeting?
Is it gonna, is it about a matter that will come before us?
It's about what he just told us. All as I want to know is, my, you know, I'll just sit here, it's all right.
No, I think it's a reasonable question, and I think I can answer it.
All right, go ahead.
My, my, my question is, is the, you know, the differences between the 40B and the overlay, would, would the buyer have the option of exercising 40B and not exercising the overlay if, if he bought the property? And I.
Yes, he doesn't have to exercise the buy right.
Gotcha, that's, that's all I want to know.
Okay.
Yeah, that's it.
Okay, and that matter won't come before us, so.
And Alicia Kristen's here too, so we can ask her clarity on some of those things too.
Kristen, can you be at our next public hearing?
Sure.
Thank you. September 24th.
Thank you Dave.
David, September 24th.
Well, I'm sure, actually, the person who really should be here is the planning director and should have been here all along, but I guess she wasn't invited.
She's here.
She's here.
Oh, she's here, oh, there she is, very good. Didn't notice that.
I snuck out.
When you're up here, you don't.
She's quiet there.
Right, okay.
I snuck out.
So she can correct me if I'm wrong, but by the way.
You know what, can I have Kristen come up for a minute? I guess I will ask you.
Can I finish?
Oh, yeah, go ahead, I thought you were done.
I would just draw your attention to the fact that when you publicize a public hearing in the newspaper and you have a time, the public hearing has to happen at that time, not at your convenience.
Correct.
And so when you publish your agenda on the, on the net or when you print it up, your, the agenda for the select board, it should show that.
It usually does.
Well, it didn't.
Not this time, correct.
In fact, if there was insufficient information on that item, most people wouldn't have known what the hell that was about.
Okay.
It really should. And also, there should have been a link to the publication in the newspaper or a PDF of it. So please, when you do this kind of thing, do it properly. Your staff work is pretty poor, as far as I can see. Okay?
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
No, thank you for the feedback.
Otherwise, I might not have been here because I might have thought you knew what you were doing.
Thank you David.
Thanks Dan.
Kristen, can you come up and explain a little bit about this?
Is there, hi, Kristen Graves, planning director. Are there, is there a specific question?
The plant, well, I'm speaking to what David had suggested about how there was, the Conservation Commission is required by law to opine on this. We haven't received anything to do with that. All we received was a letter from the assessor, the, the planning board, and the assessor, the Board of Assessors. Are you aware of any, that the Conservation Commission has?
I, yeah, so I don't know if they've, I, I believe the requirement is for the notification originally of all the committees. So I think that would be important for the select board to know that the Conservation Commission received it and that they had a discussion. I don't, I am not town council, so I, I'm not going to confirm or deny David's point, which is whether the select board needs a recommendation or to proceed with your own discussion. I'm not sure. I don't know that's wrong, but I'm also not going to confirm that legally that's in the Chapter 61A or not.
Okay.
But I will say that the planning board received the notice appropriately. I know the notice was reviewed by town council, as Tracy and David said. And all was in order in terms of their obligation to notify. So that was all done legally. And the memo from the planning board and their discussion did acknowledge that the parcel was included in the multifamily overlay district, as David informed you. That's, that was an important part of the discussion. I think that is relevant because it demonstrates that the parcel is appropriate for residential development. Chapter 61A keeps the parcel in open space in agriculture. But the conveyance of the property would change the use from open space from agriculture, selling their eggs and having the greenhouses, which they've had for years, to a residential use. So that's the transfer. The towns, in order to exercise its right, would have to match the purchase price. I haven't heard that said yet. I think that's an important consideration for the select board is to consider your, if you were to be interested in exercising your right of first refusal, you would have to match the purchase price and have that funding available. You can also, as it lays out, transfer your right of first refusal to a conservation organization. But they would also need to agree and to be ready to have the same purchase price matched. So those are important. So, those are important, uh, you know, relevant considerations, I think, as you consider this.
Yeah.
So I think in terms of the open space committee, they are often asked by select boards for opinions because it's an open space tax classification. Um, but the planning board did consider the conservation values. The open space committee, as David mentioned, was supposed to meet tonight, in which we thought was in, in advance of your public hearing. So I think the open space committee probably at their next meeting will have a discussion of this if they choose to make a recommendation um, to the select board, or if you're inter- I should say, if the select board would like a recommendation from the open space committee, um, we'll have an opportunity to do that before your September twenty-fourth.
Well, I think it's important that all boards and committees weigh in on this, so I would like a recommendation from the open space.
Great.
Okay, thank you. So this has been tabled, and we're gonna, um, since it is a public hearing, I believe it has to be moved into a, uh, date and time certain. So, I'm going to move this, uh, till, um, September twenty-fourth at seven fifteen P M. Okay. Thank you. Do I need a vote on that? I haven't done a public hearing in so long.
Uh, you had a motion and a second to continue to September twenty-fourth already.
At seven fifteen, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. All right, no old business. We have town administrators report.
Yes. That's Adam Scher. So, um, I've had a lot go on in the last month. Summer's usually a very busy time in terms of projects and public works and the likes. So, first, um, the community was awarded a Green Communities grant. Um, thank you to D P W and, and to the planning director for their work on that. Uh, the amount of the grant was a hundred and thirty-three thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, we're gonna use that money to replace the Newbury Elementary School's existing pneumatic control system with a, it's a direct digital control, so it's an automatic type system that will, um, provide control for all the HVAC equipment, uh, located in the original nineteen seventy-seven part of the building.
Brown school?
Yep, um, and the boiler room. So, um, Newbury Elementary School currently accounts for about a third of the town's annual energy usage. And because the building is old, it's a really great, uh, candidate for this type of improvement. Um, hopefully, this automation will be, um, expected to bring substantial, uh, energy conservation and reduce costs. We also expect to receive between fifty, up to two hundred and ten thousand dollars in national grid incentive grants, if this, assuming we move forward with this project and we realize the savings we anticipate. Right now, we're in the design phase, uh, the Mitsubishi is working on heat pump, um, specifications for us for when we go out to bid. Once the, uh, we're hoping to complete the first phase this fall, which includes replacing the large unit in the gym. If we all goes according to plan, um, then the next phase of our work would be completing the roofing project come this spring. We'd be asking for the final phase of, uh, funding for that project. Right now, we've completed an additional twelve thousand four hundred square feet on the roof this season. So, again, hoping, you know, everything's kind of, once this is done, then we'll move on to that type situation. So, if everything goes according to schedule with the HVAC units, then we plan to finish the roof next season.
Then that'll be after town meeting, next year.
Yes, yep.
Tr- Tracy, if I may?
Yep.
Uh, so the, the first phase isn't gonna be completed before school starts?
Um, not before school starts, but we hope to begin around, you know, by November.
And the, this, the piece of equipment, the grant, the hundred and thirty-three thousand dollar, well, this, i- if it gets, will, will it be, will it adapt to the new system also?
It's part of the new system.
So it's part of the new system, so, so, so it's not only gonna enhance the old system now, but it's also gonna be
Correct.
running the new system later.
Correct. So these are savings, um, this is, this is an example of, so we go to town meeting, we take a vote, we use our engineers' estimates to come up with how much we think a project will cost. We're looking at approximately a two million dollar project. Well, that project has now been reduced by a hundred and thirty-three thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. Then, uh, if we get incentives, it'll be further reduced. Obviously, we won't know the exact project cost until we go out to bid, but, um, you know, just, just because we actually have the approval of town meeting and get the funding in place, that doesn't stop department heads and managers from continuing to try and pursue grant opportunities when it fits the criteria of the projects that we're looking at, so.
But the roof was, the work was done on the roof.
Yep, we've already completed the reading for this, for this year's project.
Yeah, the portion that was supposed to be done this year is done.
Is already done, yes, yep. Um, we're also, uh, we had a meeting earlier this week. We're working with MVPC on a Safe Streets and Roads for All grant. Um, again, this is, this is focused on eliminating roadway deaths and injuries and those types of things. Where, where I de- this particular area had by, been identified previously. Um, it is a demonstration grant, so it would, um, make temporary safety improvements for a period of time if we should be awarded the funding. And then it gives you, um, kind of a concept, so you could see what it would look like if you made those changes permanently. Um, MVPC has put together a few ideas for temporary treatments in that location. So, um, connecting the sidewalk network around Elm and, and the school street, um, side of the roadway. So, more to come on that if we should be successful in getting that grant. Um, but I think they've already started doing some traffic count work. I saw them laying the.
I, I saw them laying it too.
This morning, Yogi would tell me, yeah, yeah, so. So that's an area where, you know, we've had some concerns in the past. I know the chairman of the board of assessors had brought that to us, uh, quite a while ago. So we were, we were looking into that and other people as well. Um, law enforcement body worn camera grants is, do you wanna talk about that at all?
I can touch on that if you want, it's up for the, it's on, um, the acceptance of the grant is up for, um, the next select board meeting. Um, so I'll repeat everything then that I'm saying now. But, um, we've been awarded a grant for us to get outfitted with body worn cameras. We had to partner with Georgetown Police Department, um, in order for this grant. We alone weren't, um, large enough of a department to qualify, but when we partnered with another community, we met the criteria and they allowed us, um, to submit an application. So Newbury is the host agency for this grant. So, once, um, approved by the board and, um, once we get an executed contract from the Commonwealth, we will be looking, um, at going forward with the department wearing body worn cameras. So this is, this is a big deal. This is a massive expense that is, with this hardware grant being taken off of the taxpayer. Body worn cameras right now aren't mandatory for officers in the Commonwealth, but do I suspect that at some point in the future, they will be and should be, I do. Um, so the fact that we're at least getting this hardware expense out of the way is big. What will then come down the road is, um, that would be on the taxpayer back, is the cloud storage for the data storage would be something that we would need to capital plan for, um, and work into the police budget as we move forward, um, and replacement costs if they get damaged. But once you have the initial setup, that's the, that's a big, big expense right out of the gate. Um, and it's a state grant, so we were fortunate to be able to get it. Some of the federal grants are much more competitive and go to the larger agencies. So Georgetown, um, and the Georgetown chief and I are very happy that we were awarded this grant for our two little departments. So, but again.
Congratulations.
Sorry to accelerate you for a week.
That's perfect, I, I, I'm good with it, but again, I'll repeat, you know, I'll repeat that for the agenda item next week. But we are super excited that we're gonna be able to get up and running this fiscal year with this important, um, tool, not only for law enforcement, but for the public. It's just, it's another step in the right direction for transparency between law enforcement and the public interaction, so I'm very happy about this.
We're gonna be meeting next month, not next week.
It's, yeah, it's next month, yeah.
Uh, if I may, the, you talked earlier to us about the, the radio upgrades and stuff. And I, I'm assuming that this is all part of that bundle?
Separate. So the body worn cameras are a separate piece than anything to do with the, with the radios that we received.
Okay, is it, is it, is it gonna be live? I mean, is the, is the ca- is the body cam live? Or is it, or is it, does it go to the cloud and then you get to look at it?
So, we, we, we have a policy that states when the body camera needs to be activated, and it's compliant with public records laws and privacy expectations and things. So if I'm inside your home, you have the right to tell me to take it off, you know, shut it off. Um, and we do, so there's, there's a number of different ways that we'll be aware of when we can constitutionally use the body cameras and when we can't. And then public records law dictates how long different interactions that are classified, as such need, needs to have that documentation held on to. Um, so, you know, a general encounter is gonna get held on to in the cloud, you know, less than a, a domestic, let's say, or, or something else. So, we, we will be compliant with all of that, but as far as our radio transmissions, it has nothing to do with it. And the pub- you know, public, there's no live feed for anyone on the camera, it downloads to the cloud. Um, and then we can share it, so no one can log in and look at the interaction with people. But it, it is open again, you know, just like our police reports are subject to public records request. Our, you know, our body camera footage would be too. It would be allowed to be used in internal investigations if somebody makes an allegation against an officer, you know, to support, um, or, or not support the claim. So it, it really, there are a number of different ways that this is a huge win for the public and for the department. Um, but again, it's an, it comes at an expense for the data storage, but we'll go through that next month. Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you. The Newbury Elementary School parking lot, the prep work for the paving of that lot was completed. The school had asked us if we would intentionally hold off until the end of the month, because they had a lot of programming that they were running through the summer, um, through the summertime. So, I, I think it's going to be finished tomorrow, and then they'll do the line striping later on at the end of the month. Um, but in advance of, of school starting. And then, uh, last Thursday, we opened bids for the fire station floor. We awarded it to Price Landscape and Construction at Boxford, as they were the low bidder, with a bid of fifty-eight thousand dollars. The project will take a couple of weeks to complete, and they hope to start sometime in mid-September. Library roof project, we have a bid opening scheduled for September fourth. That, as you know, is a metal roof project. Um, engineering that has been completed will ensure, um, that the installation is done properly. So they'll be on board to inspect as the construction occurs. We also, this month, signed our municipal office lease. It's been fully executed. It allow, allows us for three, three-year periods of extension. All, um, subject, as everything else is, to town meeting approval. Um, what's about all I have on that? No, each, each year has a three percent esca- annual escalation. Uh, you may be aware that Hanover Street had a water, Newbury Port did a water main replacement project. It was, um, we heard from a number of impacted residents and they expressed concerns about the, what they felt was inadequate notification, there were parking issues, there was dust, noise, those types of things, um, resultant of the project, but their biggest concern was relative to the fact that they were going to have to connect to the main. And the city had given them a very short window in which to do so by the end of this September. Um, the expense, they had quotes ranging from like twenty-five hundred dollars to about seven thousand dollars to do that work. Um, Chair Greco, uh, D P W Director James Saret, and I met with the mayor and some of his staff to discuss it, um, and in the end, they decided to extend that period of time through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-five. So the property owners have a little bit more time, um, to get that work done. And I think that project as well should be completed before school gets started. Uh, let's see, we received notification that Triton received a twenty-five, fiscal year twenty-five Student Opportunity Act Evidence-Based Practice Grant. Um, we, we don't usually get notification of, of their grant awards, but this one did come to us, so I just wanted to let you know. It's for, um, it includes things like co-teaching and inclusion for students with disabilities and English learners. And the grant award was for a hundred and fifty-six thousand five hundred dollars, so congratulations to them. The, oh, I wanted to show you a picture. So the Lower Green Schoolhouse had a tremendous amount of activity, and lots of visitors a couple of weeks ago. We had a local beekeeper, Mary Wenzel Brown, who's a Newbury resident, who helped us out with removal.
Oh, wow.
Not sure what they were doing there, but lots of, lots of activity that day. So thank you to Ms. Brown for her assistance, we appreciate it. Yeah, they were.
They were the moleskies.
Right, right. And the schoolhouse roof project, the historical commission is in the process of determining what product they wanna use. Once that's decided, then D P W will handle the bid process from there. Um, Orchard Street culvert replacement project is still on time, as I had mentioned before, beginning late August, uh, through November. The B C A C lease, um, as David mentioned, will be going out tomorrow. Library collective bargaining still ongoing, um, as is year-end closing.
Wow.
That's a lot.
Any questions?
The culv- the culvert one, or, that's Orchard Street, right? Is, is that gonna, is that gonna close the whole road?
Not the whole road, but they're going to, um,
But I mean, like, it'll be a dead, it'll be a dead end on both ends, is that what it's gonna do? That's what I mean.
Detour route will be Middle Road to Elm Street throughout the construction period.
Right, and you said that's end of August through September?
November.
No, nove- oh, jeez.
Yep. I mean, it's gonna alleviate flooding and we'll add guardrails for safety, so I, it's gonna be an inconvenience for a time period, but.
But it'll be fixed.
Oh, I understand the concept. They, they want the water to be able to leave quicker.
Yeah.
I get it. Yeah, makes sense.
Okay, um, we have no correspondence. Any meeting updates?
Nope.
Seeing none.
Oh, yeah, I went to a meeting Friday night. I went to the, uh, car show. Considered a meeting. It was a good turnout of people, a lot of cars. There seemed to be local people showing off their cars, and, uh, I, kudos to, to Tony and, and to, uh, Steve for pulling it off.
Well done. Um, I do have a meeting update. I did meet with, um, the Triton Facilities Group. Um, and we met with Habib and Associates to talk about alternatives to the roof. Um, sh- should Triton not be invited into the M S B A program this year? Something has to be done with the roof, because it can't, it will fail. Um, so, they're gonna look at, we've, we've, we met with this, uh, essentially, Brian was there. The, uh, Brian and the other Brian, uh, business manager was there, the principal of the, of the high school. Um, a couple of school, school committee members, myself, uh, Salisbury and Raleigh Select Board, uh, they couldn't make it. But, or Neil was supposed to, he couldn't make it, and neither could, um, Christine Nealon from Sa- uh, Raleigh. But I was there, and school committee members from Newbury and Raleigh were there, uh, Salisbury couldn't make it. Uh, Salisbury couldn't make it, but it was a very good meeting. They kind of looked at the whole plan of the school. What is definitely, you know, most needed, um, and they're gonna, Habib is gonna come back with an alternative to what happens if we don't, they don't get invited into the school thing. So I have no idea what that's gonna look like. Um, the next meeting, I think it's gonna be in September. I, I'm, I'm not gonna be able to attend. I asked Tracy to attend on my, yeah. And we'll see what, what they come up with. They said they need about three weeks to figure out, and I think they're gonna come up with two alternatives. So two different ideas, so that's ongoing.
The, does that, you said it's the faci-, it's a facilities, so the D C C doesn't, it's got nothing to do with the D C C, so. It would not be discussed in a D C C meeting?
It may come as an agenda item.
Okay.
But the D C C doesn't mean, it's a separate, separate group.
Okay.
Matt Landers is the ch-, he's the chair of that facilities committee. Um, review and approve meeting minutes. Um, I'll entertain a motion to approve June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four meeting minutes.
Motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
There was one of them I wasn't there, so I, I.
Which, which one?
I was looking at them. I, um.
I think it was eight, seven.
I forget which one it was, but.
So, uh.
I, they all looked good to me, except for the one that I wasn't there, I wasn't.
All right, well, let's take them one at a time. So we have, um, July twenty-third, twenty twenty-four meeting minutes. Entertain a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
I have a minor, minor point, mi-, minor correction.
Yeah.
I think, uh, one, two, three pages in, David at the bottom. The motion at the bottom of that third page, yeah, discussion of, it's Mrs. Carrigan. Oris was her mother who was in the audience. So it should be Carrigan, C A R R I G A N. She had the movie event.
So I'll entertain a motion with that, with that edit.
And this is July twenty-third, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, that's the meeting I wasn't at, so.
Motion to accept.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have executive session, meeting minutes from July twenty-third.
Motion to approve, seven twenty-three, twenty-four, executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we have August seventh, meeting minutes. That was a real short meeting. I don't think, Leslie, I don't think you were here for that one.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Did you approve the six twenty-five minutes?
Yeah, we did those first.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the one. I, I missed that too, Tracy. So June twenty-fifth, we, we are.
Yeah, they were here, okay, June twenty-fifth.
Motion to sign warrants and then the meeting.
Well, motion to sign warrants. Is there a second? All in favor? Aye. And then I'm gonna, we're gonna go into executive session. So I'll read this pursuant to, uh, General Laws, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A two. I move that the Board of Selectmen enter, enter into executive session for contract negotiations with non-union personnel, namely the town administrator. I need a roll call vote. Um, Alicia Greco, chairman, yes. Lauren DiMeo, vice chair.
Yes.
Wesley Matthews, clerk.
Yes.
Dana Packer.
Yes.
Jeff Walker.
Jeff Walker, yes.
Okay, and this meeting will convene at the conclusion of executive session. We'll go back into open session and vote the, uh, contract. So thank you everyone for coming. We're gonna go into executive session. Okay, so, um, I'll enter, um, now, do I, do I need to move to come back into open session? Yeah, so I entertain a motion to come back into open session?
Motion to entertain to come back into open session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we have one agenda item left to do that we just, uh, negotiated with the town administrator to extend her contract for a period of three years. And I will entertain a motion to, um, execute the employment agreement between the Town of Newbury and Tracy Blaze for another three years as written in the exact contract that's gonna roll up in another three years.
Motion to recommend that the contract be extended for another three years in that agreement with Tracy Blaze on Town of Newbury as written, as explained by Alicia.
As written.
Second.
Second. Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And now I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Do we need to do anything with the, uh, vacation time?
Yes.
I, I would like to request that the board consider allowing me to, um, roll my eleven days of vacation time into fiscal year twenty twenty-five to be taken by the end of the calendar year before December thirty-first.
Motion to roll eleven days into calendar year, uh, twenty twenty-five to be used by the end of the year.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second.
They have to do the sign warrant thing?
We did, we did.
We did that already, okay.
We have to sign them now. All in favor?
Yep.
Aye.
Aye.